All right, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, September twenty-third. Like to call the meeting to order and our county clerk will provide roll call.
Commissioner Quinn?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Noel? It's not here.
Okay. Thank you. If you'd please stand and join us for an invocation. Mr. Cormode will be providing that as well, followed by the Pledge of Legions.
Before I read scripture and pray with you just now, I have to comment about, these have been some, some interesting weeks in these last few days. If you happened to hear Vice President Vance on Sunday, he commented that in the last two weeks, he's talked about his faith in Jesus Christ in public more than he's ever done in all of his public career. So it's quite, quite the time that I spent a little time thinking about the amendment to the Constitution that Thomas Jefferson assisted on. You know, Jefferson was pretty upset with the Constitution when it was drafted. He opposed it. He was in France. He was the ambassador of France. Only Ben Franklin signed both the Declaration of Independence that Jefferson had written and the Constitution. Jefferson opposed it and said, you left John Locke's thinking out of the Constitution. John Locke had argued against government establishing what is religious orthodoxy. You know, the Reformation principle that the prince decides what's religion in his principality. And Locke argued against that and Jefferson said, we left that out. The First Amendment says the government doesn't establish orthodoxy. But Vice President Vance saying that he believes in Jesus Christ is not the government establishing thing. It's his personal testimony. And we need to make sure that we understand that very fine line where it is, I think. And that's why you can read words like the psalmist said in Psalm twenty-seven, where King David is really making quite the statement about where things are. In Psalm twenty-seven at verse four, he says, "One thing I have asked of the Lord, that will I seek after, that I may dwell in the house of the Lord all the days of my life, and gaze upon the beauty of the Lord to inquire in his temple. For he will hide me in his shelter in the day of trouble. He will conceal me under the cover of his tent. He will lift me high up on a rock. Now my head shall be lifted up above my enemies all around me, and I will offer in his tent sacrifices with shouts of joy. I will sing and make melody to the Lord. Here, O Lord, when I cry aloud, be gracious to me and answer me. You have said, 'Seek my face.' My heart says to you, 'Your face, O Lord, do I seek. Hide not your face from me; turn not your servant away in anger. You who have been my help, cast me not off, forsake me not, O God of my salvation.'" Let's pray. Father, thank you that you are present in things that we do, that you are mindful of us. And I pray, Father, that you will guide the commissioners as they meet today so that this is a day of them making good and positive decisions. Even though Commissioner Noel cannot be with them today, I pray, Father, that the commissioners here will, will function effectively and well. And I pray, Father, that your presence will be felt and enjoyed in the time of making decisions. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Act like allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comment?
May I comment?
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Okay. It seemed like the last time I, I was here, it was before the revenue neutral hearing over at Memorial Hall, and I commented about ad valorem taxes and commented about maybe we ought to have a sales tax or something that way. And then Commissioner Campbell startled me. Yeah, you've been thinking about that. And now I hear the legislature's been thinking about that. You know, ad valorem tax, in my opinion, is based on a medieval concept of a baron and tenant. Oh, I'm going to give you an acre. Now you can raise so many hogs. Give me a hog. Uh, you know, it's ad valorem tax is a tax on balance sheets. And fifty years ago or more, we had intangible taxes in Kansas and we applied the mill rate to intangible taxes. And people said, we don't like that part of our balance sheet being taxed. Balance sheets don't produce income. And that's kind of crazy. Uh, income tax, we can hide all kinds of things. Sales taxes still, I, I encourage you in what you said, where you were when you were going there. As you've worked through this, you know, the legislature said revenue neutral. That works at the macro level because there's only three items in the equation in there. There's the assessed evaluation. There's the mill rate that produces the revenue. You decide how much we're going to spend. And somebody's told you what the assessment is that pretty well dictates the mill rate that you come up with. That works at the macro level. It doesn't work at the micro level. Let me tell you what's personally going on. I own property in six different sections. Uh, not a large amount of property. So I get six tax bills. Fun game. The collective market value appraisal on those properties has gone up twenty percent this year as market value. If we stayed at revenue neutral, my taxes this year would have gone down eleven percent. Now that all the hearings are done and the mill rates are set, uh, my taxes will only go down uh, five percent. Oh, but you're raising more money than last year, but my taxes are going down. That's at the micro level. If at the micro level, the taxes are going down on what's market value at two and a quarter million dollars, that means there needs to be twelve million dollars market value someplace where they're going to go up about one percent to balance what's happening on the micro level over here. That's why ad valorem taxes are always going to be a source of complaint. Because the way the assessment is done in Kansas, it's just going to be a complaint. If we can encourage the legislature to move toward taxes on what we spend because I can't hide what I spend. I spend it. We all see it. It's out there. Encourage the legislature to move in that direction.
Thank you. Any other public comment? None on? Fine, okay. Uh, with that, I have an addition to our agenda. Um, so we're going to, under new business, adjust, have the courthouse entertain a motion for the courthouse to be open on Columbus Day. So with that addition, I would look for approval of this week's agenda.
Sure.
All second. It's moved and seconded. All those with favor say aye. Aye. Pass is two to zero. All right, the consent agenda is up. Um, we have three sets of commission meeting minutes from September sixteenth, September nineteenth, and September twenty-first. The regular meeting on the sixteenth and then budget hearing on the nineteenth, as well as the budget hearing, uh, or sorry, budget feedback on the nineteenth, budget hearing on the twenty-first. And then a financial director review.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, we don't have a payroll total yet. We do have payroll this week for Friday's check date, but we don't have it completed yet. Um, the accounts payable run for tomorrow, Wednesday, September twenty-fourth is ninety-two thousand, two forty-one, eighty. Out of that total, two thousand, one forty-one, thirty-one are credit card. And there's no negative cash balances on this AP.
Thank you. With that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
All second. It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pass is two to zero. Um, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Campbell?
Uh, I don't want to beat a dead horse. Uh, we've been working on the budget for months. Um, we've had the R and R hearing. We've had two. We've got a budget hearing, a hearing in between, just so the folks could come here on a Friday versus a Sunday. So we have given it a lot of time, a lot of effort. Uh, I will just simply say, uh, it's, you know, it's officially closed and approved by the commission, but the work is just beginning. So the, the, uh, the departments that were involved in some of the reductions, um, they, they have to adjust and they have to make it work. And, uh, so I, I think we all need to be aware of that. So we, thank you.
Thank you. Um, from our budget hearing on Friday evening, uh, Mrs. Martin had asked us um, the proceeds for Senior Village. Uh, at the time, I didn't have those numbers in front of me. Um, and so in working with the finance director this morning, we sold Senior Village for one million, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. After the final expenses came through of one ninety-eight, two eighteen, twenty, uh, we netted one million, three hundred thousand, seventy-six dollars and eighty cents. So I told, um, her that I would get that answer and get it to you. So uh, with that, just wanted to recap, um, also, um, that I, although this was the toughest budget process that I've been through since being a commissioner, it's also, um, it feels the best for so many reasons. And the fact that we started at the sixty-eight point nine five one, we reduced nine point seven five mils to fifty-nine point two oh one. Uh, that equated to two million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars of reductions. But more than that, we are finally levying what it's taking to run the county. So for constituents and transparency purposes, there's no shell games or cash padding behind the, behind there. So from here forward, I feel like this is where everyone can see exactly what your money is going for. Any increases, you'll be able to know exactly where that is and why. Um, so I just, as hard as it is, I think that the path forward is, um, going to be very positive, um, for everybody involved, um, to know that these taxes that are being levied are, are covering our county services. Um, we removed all the overages from the sales tax. So, um, you're paying for a three-quarter cent sales tax that runs our solid waste facility and our joint communications. Um, and there's no overages plugged into your ad valorem taxes. So any need for that in the future will be a discussion, in my opinion, on a user-based fee, uh, with those using it instead of just plugging everything into property taxes. So it's just really good to have a clear view, um, in twenty twenty-six and, and in the future. So thank you for everybody that came to our budget hearings on Friday, on Sunday, and everybody that's, we've had more feedback this year than ever, which is wonderful. It's, it's great. So um, all right. So with that, the first item I added is, um, I'd look for a motion to have our courthouse open on Columbus Day. Um, historically, we've had training days. Feedback over the years has not been positive for those. Um, and after reevaluating, um, a working day, um, is what is recommended. So with that, I would look for a motion um, to keep the courthouse open on Columbus Day.
So moved.
I will second, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pass is two to zero. All right. Um, we have Roger Cottle, um, for input on neighborhood revitalization program. Guys can come on up. Nick, I can get you a chair up here if you'd like.
Thank you for coming. Thanks for coming to our budget hearing Sunday, too.
Well, thank you.
Well, I know both of you are familiar with me, uh, but I'd like to introduce my grandson, Nick, who, who, uh, in the future, people like Nick, his age group, all that, rather than mine, will be affected by what we're talking about today. I didn't know whether, I guess, in order not to draw things out to an extreme, uh, uh, I did give, uh, letters and, uh, some of the information that I wanted to present to you both and Eric and, uh, wanted you to review it and hopefully you did and that you might have some questions about it. And I'm, and I'm quite willing to make a correction if, uh, because the possibility of me making mistake is extremely good. But, uh, we did work on it pretty hard and, uh, I tried to get the information from the, the sources that, uh, that had them. So, uh, I guess before we go over it too much, maybe you'd like to ask some questions or would we want to? I, I guess I'm looking for guidance on how to proceed. Would you want me to go over this? Or would you want, have you gone over enough or, uh, does it need to be recorded or you know what? So, uh, I'm looking to you for guidance here. What, what would you like?
Uh, well, we, um, did have time to review it. Um, and there's no, um, discrepancy in the fact that you and your family have done great things for Atchison County and very much appreciated. Um, outlined, um, some of the numbers within the letter and, um, it's just, it's good information. Um, you know, I think you actually shortchanged yourself a little bit. Um, and some of the percentages, they're higher than, than what you had said, which is wonderful. I mean, it, it just speaks to what you're, what you're telling us. So, um,
I tried to be on the, I didn't want to exaggerate.
No, you're, you're good. So I appreciate you, um, you coming and, and having the discussions. I know you and I talked quite a bit on Sunday and appreciate your perspective and, and the information and being willing, right? To come to a commission meeting, to visit with us about this and share your perspective because at the end, and at the end of the day, I can assure you that um, I, as a county commissioner, it, am very understanding of, of the benefits of, of these programs and, and supportive of them, um, in capacities, you know, that look a little different than what we've done, right? So for the past twenty years, um, which actually I was going to ask you that, do you know when, because you were part of the, I was told it was established in October of two thousand and five?
I think that was a renewal.
Because?
We think it traced nineteen ninety-five.
Okay, so I found a resolution. So I found a resolution, um, from this one was ninety-eight. So this might have been another update, but going back to exactly, I think, what we're trying to accomplish on a county level because the county is different than all the other taxing entities. And that's one of the things I want to make sure is we didn't want to blow up a program that's working well for all, right? Like, we, we, no, absolutely not. And so that's why we were like, okay, we want to this continue as is for all the people that it's working for. From the county level, having it wide open from one end to another for every project, right? And when you, when you start reading the rules and looking back at the history and seeing some of the excluded projects are being rebated, like it's just time after twenty years for the county to take a step back and say, okay, we one hundred percent support these type of programs. What makes sense and where does it fit on neighborhoods and, you know, Atchison, neighborhoods in Effingham, neighborhoods in Muskota? What is, what do those look like? And kind of taking a step back and take a look at it, which that resolution that I found from ninety-eight pretty much, I mean, it specifically states in there the predominance of buildings, which dilapidation, you know, detrimental to public health. Not saying some of that, but we understand the investment of these people like yourselves. Like you come into a community and you're investing in building infill housing, right? And you don't know the outcome when you can't control the neighborhood. So focusing on what do those neighborhoods need? How can we be a partner? What does that look like? Um, and just kind of reevaluating the county's participation in it, um, versus just, like I said, wide open from and, uh, in, in talking to people, you know, you hear people say, well, they, everybody's taking advantage of it and this and that. And I'm like, oh, you can't really utilize those words when a program's available, you're kind of silly not to take advantage of it, right? Like, it's been twenty years. Everybody, and I think it's just became more and more popular. And when you take a step back and start looking at it, you're like, wow. What once was neighborhood revitalizations kind of got out of hand and maybe it's time for the county to take a deeper dive at that and, and sit down and, and say, okay, we support this program, but what does it look like to where it makes sense for the county? Um, and I know I said, you know, talking to other Kansas counties that have the program too, um, they're utilizing it, but just not to the levels we are. Um, I know some of the numbers back. I mean, we had plugged in originally to this twenty-six budget, over a half million dollars. Once we lowered the budget, it got down to four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. But other counties that were circulating, you know, similar to ours is like more nineteen thousand and different things. And I'm not saying that there's a dollar figure tied to it. I'm just saying we need to look at the, the program intent of neighborhood revitalization and figure out what does that look like and how can the county be partners at the table with those folks. So that's just my, my perspective of where my head's at. Cause definitely pro-growth, definitely want to continue to see what we've seen. You know, we have developers, so you know, so many projects going on that are wonderful. We need to keep seeing that because the more we can incentivize and, and make quality housing in Atchison. I mean, I see it. I've seen it. You know, people come here, there's no quality housing, so they could pop to Weston or pop to Leavenworth and you don't want that. You want young professionals that want to come to Atchison County to have a place to do that. So, um, definitely supportive of the program, definitely supportive of your efforts and everything you've done because, um, that's incredible. Like I was telling you Sunday, I'm like, you've created your neighborhoods are what people want when they're moving here from out of, I, I, that's my, my experience. They want the Brookdale's. They want the park. They want to feel the sense of community in those areas like you've developed and out of town families, that's what they want. You drive them through there. I mean, I can drive them around Atchison all day and you go up there and they see the little kids in their tricycles from one end to another. You've created what families want and I want you to know how, I mean, appreciative the whole county is of, of efforts of that. Um,
Well, thank you. Uh, I appreciate your favorable comments. Did you want to comment?
Well, I wanted to hear from you first, but, 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 um, yeah, since yeah, her, her comments are relevant right now, so I'm going to go ahead and speak to it. So I'm sure you guys and, and others, uh, kind of at your level, the, the business owners and in this town have, have paid attention to what this budget, what happened with this budget this year, the county budget. I'm sure you're all aware of the direction that we went and, and the input that we had, right? That, that we, that we received from the community that drove us to this. Okay. So having said that, it just makes sense then to take a comprehensive look at what the county's involved in. It's not fair. It's not fair to make cuts and not look at everything else, right? So we looked at the NRP and based on our budget and the revenue streams that come in that are largely property tax. The, the county is largely property tax driven. And so because that's the case, anything that we pay out in incentives comes from that base. It comes from it. So, so we had to look at it in that, in that purview. We had to look at it that way. And when we looked at the NRP that was created thirty years ago, um, the way it was, uh, rolled out probably made sense then. The county's participation was minimal like everybody else's. It was minimal when it first started. But now that it's ramped up and it's, it's really going, has anybody from the county ever looked at our participation in that program? Had they ever broken it down and said, you know what? Maybe this doesn't make sense. It's too big. Maybe our piece of the pie, the incentive pie is too big. And, and, and so that's why we're making the move that we are today is that, is that we, we pulled out that when we pulled out, let me make this clear to everybody listening, um, it didn't affect any other taxing entity. All the other taxing entities that are in this program are still in the program. Uh, we are administering that program. We always have and we continue to administer that program. But the county said, based on the numbers, we have to pull out and, and take some time and look at how we can get back in that makes sense for the county. You know, like Commissioner Quinn said, we are all about growth. We want to see growth just as much as anybody else. Uh, but it has to make sense for us. Um, but I, I, I personally am willing to, once we, once we figure out what that is, get right back in and, uh, be a participant in that. So, and also to, to, you know, just to, just to reiterate, I, you, you, the Cottle family, what you've done in this community, uh, is that I don't, they, they can, we never pay you back because, uh, you know, I was, I, I lived in one of your homes at one time and you went out of your way, you know, to get me in there. And so I, I, I appreciate, you know, your input. And I thank you for, uh, your community involvement over the years. So.
One more relevant thing, I think that for us is where we're looking at property taxes and parcel numbers and different things is over twenty percent of our parcels are already tax exempt, right? So that shrunk the base. And then if we're rebating every project from one end to another, I mean, it's just, it's we're unique in our county. We have a lot of assets, but a lot of struggles as far as like a majority of, of them, you know, are exempt and when it comes to property taxes and different things. So.
I appreciate your kind remarks and I will make a couple of comments. Um, the, the thing that comes up a little bit was in, I think it's very wise that you're back up and take a look at it and say, what is this doing for us? And that's my job is to present the idea and show you what it is doing for you. And, uh, you don't see those things. You have seen the, the aspect of people got a break, but you haven't seen what the break did for Atchison until we had this information here. So we hope that it doesn't, uh, give you a good reason to take a look at it. Now, one thing that, that's come up is whether it's a countywide thing or a citywide thing or whatever. And of course, the citywide thing affects us, but the first in our uh, P program didn't, I, I don't remember that it, it included the county and there were county people that came and said, hey, look, why are people of Atchison being treated differently than the people in Atchison County? We live here too, and, uh, and we should get that same advantage. And so the commissioners were like you, they said, well, we better take a look at it and see. And so they looked at it and said, well, it has done us a lot of good. Maybe we'll do the county some good. And so at that time, they got on the bandwagon and it said included us. Now, I'm not positive of that reaction. It seemed like that's how I remember it. Um, but, but, uh, that's not carved in stone. The, uh, other thing is, um, that, um, how it incentives are important. If you walk down the hall or the, the aisle at Walmart and they've got an item out there that's twenty-five percent off, uh, you weren't thinking about buying a plastic basket, but it's discounted from seven ninety-nine to five ninety-nine. Sometimes you react. And that's a little bit of the incentive of this program. It, it is that if a person is debating between Weston and Leavenworth, we have a little bit of a sales pitch that we can say, look, we, you get a tax break here. So we gain that, not that particular day, although we gained some, but in general, in the long run, Atchison gains a house that's paying four to five thousand a year. And I know where you said, uh, that I might've been incorrect. I played it down, uh, to a certain extent, but, um, it, the incentive does give a person a reason to do it. Now, one of our lots, which you noticed there, that if it's sitting empty, generates a hundred dollars a year. But even though a person builds a house on and gets the tax break, the lot value goes up and you're partially paying the taxes. So we don't make any more as far as a profit goes. It, it goes to the consumer saving incentive. And the world evolves on in, in incentives. That's, that's why you guys are here. You have an incentive. For whatever reason it might be, different people, yours might be different than, than yours, but, uh, there's an incentive. You want the county to do better and it's nice to have a little income. It's nice this, that part. But uh, there's an incentive. You want the county to do better and it's nice to have a little income. It's nice this, that part. Uh, so, so there's an incentive and incentives are important. And i- if that makes Atchison do a little better and Atchison County do a little better. It, it's good to plant those seeds and that's what you're doing with this program. The seeds are flowering, but not that day. There, you have to wait for harvest and you get a good harvest when you start getting from our houses. When you start getting seven, eight, nine thousand dollars a year, you're having a whale of a good harvest. Now, one thing that a, a previous commissioner brought up fifteen years or when this was renewed. Said, well, what are you doing? He said, I, I understand this, that, that, that it's a good program. And it works for your new houses and buildings out in the country and whatever. But he said, you know, what about the poor people? You know, where do they get a break? Well, the answer is. When people here in town buy a house in Brookdale and they sell their house, somebody moves up. And so that house fills. Where they move out of, that house fills. So on down the line, those people have the opportunity. They may not get the incentive. The people that spent the big dollars get the incentive, but, but they get a, an opportunity at that house. And if it needs to be fixed up, then they also have an incentive on the program. That, that uh, i- if they have to spend fifteen thousand dollars on it, they get a program or, or that's the same program. A- a- and they get that advantage too. So people who aren't. Uh, in the economic. Uh, situation where they can build a new house, still take advantage of it. They just don't realize it. Nor do some of the rest of us realize it. But there's a domino effect that goes all the way down. And it improves a lot of these houses. And so.
A- a- and we've had, I had talked to someone that we built a house for recently. But so he's a good story of how this works. You know, he started in a hundred thousand dollar house on Q Street. Bought a house in um, Heritage Hills. And he probably bought it a little earlier than he could have because he had a tax break on it. And so he could buy, buy a couple of years earlier. And then um, now he just finished a house in the Brookdale area. Um, and same thing, bought it, probably built a little nicer house just because he can afford it with a little bit of a tax break on the front end. But so it opens up that house on Q Street. Then he moves out of the house in Cardinal Circle. It opens up that house. And so it's got a cascading effect um, on everyone else in the county. And the, the nice thing from a county perspective too, is you know, the more changing of hands, the more selling of houses there, there are. It allows you guys to keep up to date, accurate market, market appraisals. If someone stays in a house for fifty years and never sells, that, that house appraisal is going to be well before, well below market. You know, so the more house changes hands, um, the more accurate, the county kind of gets readings on an accurate market appraisal. And what's going, what it's going for in the open market. Um, and so the only way to have kind of houses change hands is you just need a lot of economic activity and specifically. More houses being built. And that's, at the end of the day, that's the only way to raise tax revenue. Um, you know, you can raise a mill levy and appra- appraisals, but there's a ceiling on that. You have to have new rooftops. And anything we can do to incentivize that um, is kind of what we're for. And um, I think, you know, the past few years is a good example. There's probably been more new houses going up collectively. And it's great that, I mean, there's some years where Roger was the only person in town building houses. But this year, there's a lot of people and that's really encouraging to see. And a lot of projects and, and not even houses, like uh, you have, you know, the apartment renovations with the central school and the old Y M C A building. You took a property that wasn't being taxed anything. And of course they're getting a tax break upfront, but in a few years, that's going to front in it. And it's going to be bringing in a lot of, a lot of money for the accounting, where that building, you know, if no one would have taken the initiative to get it done. Might have brought zero dollars in tax dollars in. And so just anything we can do to incentivize growth and new rooftops um, is kind of what we're for.
Very much appreciate that. And I know the mentality you were talking about countywide versus citywide. Because when I started, that was it. And I'm like, at what point do people realize regardless of where you live, you're in the county? And so from my perspective is this program fits several areas of the county. Right now, you know, it's easy to identify neighborhoods in Effingham, neighborhoods in Atchison, Muskota, Lancaster, wherever that looks like. And then there could be a rural neighborhood that will pop up that would have the same, you know. But we just need to take a step back um, and, and take a look. And like you said, you're here to give us. The backup of why we need to keep looking at it hard. And I very much appreciate you both taking the time to put this together. Uh, to give it to commissioners um, and to allow us to have, you know, that information from you guys as.
And we appreciate the time that you've allowed us and we hope that we've made some one of a case for our side of things. And uh, look forward to. Building a lot of houses here in Atchison in the future. We've got room to do it and.
That's awesome.
Probably not going to be the one, but that's why I brought Nick along. And the, the, the situation for you guys is that you're dealing with a tough situation right now. We understand that as far as to go. But it's in the future, the commissioners say that you don't stay commissioners for the rest of your life. Maybe you're going to make it easy for the next, so easier for the next set of commissioners if we get this, these numbers up as far as uh. Our tax base goes and you realize how much houses. What a good percentage of those create that, that tax base. So we won't take any more of your time. We thank you and.
Yeah, thank you guys very much. Appreciate you coming. Thank you. Thank you, Roger.
Yep, thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming. All right. Next we have uh, Pat Henderson County Councilor, the consideration of the Memorial Hall agreement. Oh, and sorry, we voted on these minutes and I need to pass them around for signature. Let me do that really quick. There's that. And then we have the memorial hall lease agreement. Um, we have them, was it last week they came and we visited about that? And then uh, Pat made the adjustments, send it to them. Everybody seems in favor of, of this amended six month.
Right.
Okay.
The, the, the basic change was going from a, we, we don't have any agreement at present, but. Well, I guess we have a verbal understanding that the recreation commission occupies that building and does their programming out of it. Uh, and has for, for many decades. This agreement takes effect uh, beginning of the year. We'll cover the first six months of one twenty-six. And then after that, it will automatically renew for successive one-year terms to go with the. The school district and the recreation commission's budget calendar, which is from July one to June thirty. Um, there aren't big changes between this draft and the last other than uh, the effective date. And then the shorter initial term being twenty-six months instead of a year. Uh, I talked with Nick, uh, said the recreation commission is agreeable to, to that draft of the agreement. And uh, Travis Grossman uh, sent an email to the same effect. So.
Awesome.
I think it's ready. Um, I have three separate signature pages and that way each can have the original signature page when it's finished.
Awesome. Sounds great. All right. So with that, I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign the memorial hall lease agreement. Between Atchison County, the trustees of Memorial Hall and Atchison Recreation Commission.
So moved.
Hey, I'll second, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. That one. Um, and then Pat is working with finance director on the M O U for project concern. So we could put that on next week's agenda. That would be wonderful. All right. Next we have the finance director with the consideration of county council request for proposal, consideration of P O for Naco dues. Consideration of P O to the Atchison County Extension Office and Health Department for second half appropriations.
Morning. Again. So last week we reviewed the county counselor R P. We made date changes. Any other changes in it or thoughts, discussion?
The dates were the one thing that stood out to me. I wanted to make sure that.
Okay.
Those were later in the, in the year. Do you have an updated copy by chance?
I don't. I can print one.
Yeah, because I only have the one I wrote all over. From last week. I guess we don't sign this though. So it doesn't really matter. Sorry.
Yeah, no, you don't.
Sorry. I've been, I don't think we need, because we all have it in our email. So. All right. So I'd love for a motion to approve the request for proposal for county counselor effort than by our finance director.
Um, what are we, we're approving, what, what exactly the?
I would assume to put it out on the open and to move forward with it.
And I just, I think it, I don't know if the public understands exactly what it is. Can we explain? Exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it. I mean, to some degree, can you sum it up?
So I think it, I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn, but from what I've gathered, it's to make it a contracted position. At a set hourly rate.
In that, it's into our look at our budget and trying to.
Yeah, it would not exceed the budget and I think it would be less on the budget itself as a whole.
So we're trying to save money in the process is what, that, that's basically what this is. This process is to.
I mean, it would do that, I guess.
Is to, uh, uh, eventually, we're hoping that the bid would come in under what we're currently paying. And that that's the. Ascent spine longer than the civil try to.
Yeah.
And we've amended our dates so that, I mean, it's, it's public knowledge. It was on M S C news. That our county counselor is up for a position. He's made it to the top three and we're super excited for him. But his deadline is October twenty-eighth. So we wanted to make sure that our timeline reflected after that. Um, if he were interested in also submitting a proposal uh, de- depending on what that looks like. So that's why I wanted to make sure those dates were at like later.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure, make public that we are uh, doing our due diligence and trying to uh. Lower the cost to the county to taxpayers. Uh, and that's, that's our primary concern for doing this. And the fact that. Uh, we may be losing a counselor and so for that, it makes sense to do it. Makes sense to do it now versus later. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, I. I would move to approve that.
It's been moved. I will second, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. This is two to zero.
So based on that, it is to be posted on the county website today.
Okay.
The twenty-third of September. It will be posted on the website. Other than that, we could do some sort of blip on social media about it. But I don't, I will not be sending it to anyone, I guess.
Right, yeah.
It would be up for whoever who wants to do it to put in for it.
And I would, I would just do like we normally do positions on social uh, website, social media.
Yeah.
And while we're on that subject, I would just, I've been on the commission a short time, very short time. Uh, but I have, I appreciate our counselor services. I, I feel a hundred percent confident, you know, what I do here that, that uh. He will back me up on all the legal matters. So I, I, I would hate to see him go, but I would, if, if that is his goal. Um, more power to you. If, if that's your goal to move up and become a judge, uh, more power to you. I'd see you kind of need to see you go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the second thing is I have a purchase order to Naco for four hundred and fifty dollars even. For twenty twenty-six membership dues. It is in the county general budget.
Look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our finance director. For the twenty twenty-six membership dues of four hundred and fifty dollars. If you don't mind just saying a few things about this. So this is um, the National Association of Counties. Um, so what I've seen since I've been here is they had leadership programs. Um, I know our H R director um, and myself both took part of the leadership program. The road and bridge superintendent also, I believe, took part of that leadership program. Um, they also have committees, which I have not yet dabbled into, but at these meet, at the meetings. Um, learning how that can help um, us. If, if we could identify some of the committees and maybe work toward getting on some of those. I know uh, Richard Mullin from Jefferson County um, has a, has a story he shared with me of how that paid off for his county, right? It's like just getting involved and just being able to share your experiences and all of the things. Um, trying to remember what else Naco. I mean, from a practical standpoint, right? Because you can be members anywhere, but it's like, what do you get out of it? Um, because we were members of the League of Municipalities a year and we were like, we didn't get a return on investment. So we stopped that. I, I think that um, we need to tap into this a little bit more. But I definitely know that there's um. Which is taking time to research it, right? Because they have um, so many resources on their website for all the things. Um, all the departments and different things that I'm just not that familiar with all of them. So.
But I, it, it's, it's a good cause. It's a good, it's a good program for us to be in and I believe so. I would approve that.
You would make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion's been made. I will second, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes. It is zero. I need to make myself a note to dig into that a little bit more. Sorry.
Um, I'm also doing that too because Naco is, they did something different this year. Um, they have a better portal, like online portal for resources. Um, and I just found that out. So I made a note to go on there and look to see what I can find on my login of their page.
Okay.
Uh, they, they might have something already out there to help.
Awesome.
Um, next purchase order is to Atchison County Extension Council. This would be their second half appropriation. The total full appropriation amount was one thirty-eight, five thirty-four. That is what the twenty twenty-five is budgeted. Um, we've already paid the first half sixty-nine thousand two sixty-seven on March fifth of this year. Uh, the goal is to pay out their second half appropriation of sixty-nine thousand two sixty-seven. However, with a budget. You can only pay out what you have available to you in cash. So the amount that we have available in this fund um, from distributions and tax collections. Is sixty-seven thousand two ninety-one eighteen. Um, the remaining to pay to extension council would be one thousand nine seventy-five eighty-two. I have enclosed a letter. Um, if the board approves this appropriation to them, I've enclosed, enclosed a letter to them stating. That as soon as the collections um, fully come in for their budget through the distribution process, we would issue a check. Um, for the difference, what we owe them. Um, so I'm. um, for the difference, what we owe them, um, so I'm asking to approve this purchase order for sixty-seven thousand, two ninety-one, eighteen.
So, here's a crazy thought, I mean, they haven't, they're, they're not aware at this point, the Extension Council, what we're
Yeah, no, that we've talked about.
To today, or to just now.
Yeah.
Um, so we don't know what their actual need is at this point, where, where they are with their own budget, so what if, what if we asked to cut that in half and give them half of that? Instead of the, instead of basically, you know, cutting us back to zero dollars, I mean, it's just a thought, cuz you could just as easily give them the second half when it's available versus
You could.
The whole thing right now.
Could.
And, and so.
We can.
I don't know, I'm just saying, if we held off on this, we got in touch with them and said, what is, what is your need at this, at this point, what is your actual need at this point, can we, can we do half of that now, half of it?
Yeah, that's definitely doable.
What, what are you, what are your thoughts?
I would just need some time to revisit.
No, I, I get it, I get it.
I mean, I, to me, as long as we're communicating with them and it works, it doesn't matter to me eh, which way, um, I think if we, the quarterly thought process for next year, uh, makes sense, and then that way they know exactly what to and, and to accomplish kind of what you're saying here of like.
And I still agree with that, I think we go forward with that, but to, to satisfy, you know, th- the county's needs and the Extension Office needs, what about with that, but just that remaining amount, what if we call them, see what their needs are, and if, cutting that in half, be giving half now and half, uh, let's say, I don't know, maybe towards the end of the year.
Help me understand how that helps the county needs, I'm just wondering.
Well, when, when I hear from Mark that it, we're basically training us to give them just that.
No, no.
No, what I'm saying is. Well, then.
Cuz that, the Extension Council, its own levy, there isn't, there is nothing else in there, that is their full amount that they're entitled to, that's what you levied, is the one thirty-eight.
Right, right, but we can't give them the entitlement, the entire.
Right, that's because people have paid their taxes, correct?
And so I get that that's what's levied up to this point, that's what they have. Is that how we wanna handle that, to give them every, every bit of that, I guess that's the.
That's what you do with every other appropriation.
Legal, I guess, way to do it, okay, alright.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that, dude.
So I look for a motion to approve the purchase order to the Extension Council for sixty-seven thousand, two ninety-one, eighteen as presented by our Finance Director, notating that nineteen seventy-five, eighty-two will be to come when property taxes have been collected.
So.
I'll second, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes. Then do you need a motion from us, um, to pay them out on a quarterly basis in twenty-six? Or how does that look for what you need, you'll just communicate with them, and then that'll be? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, the other appropriation is to, um, the Health Department for forty thousand dollars, it is out of the, uh, general fund. It's, the budget was, their full appropriation budget was eighty thousand, this is the second half for forty.
Our motion to approve the purchase order, um, to the Health Department as presented by our Finance Director in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
So.
Second, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Uh, real quick, do you know what, um, just in looking at that extension shortfall, what are we doing, um, to collect the property taxes, like what efforts are being made?
Um, as far as I know, um, probably none. So, there are outstanding tax reports that we can run. Um, and we can make phone calls to those people, we can send a postcard, we can do an email if there's is one available, but I don't think that there's any.
That's, that's not exactly complete, because every September, um, the, well, in August, the treasurer compiled a list of the people who haven't paid their taxes, and that list gets published in the paper, and then.
Those are the ones we called?
Well.
Well, we called the ones that, not everyone.
That didn't get their.
Yeah, the ones that got crossed over in that.
And if those don't get paid within, uh, three years after that deadline, they go into tax foreclosure sale. So, and taxes do get collected from that, and the properties that get sold generally sell for less than the taxes that are owed, but there are quite a few more properties that get redeemed, and the taxes paid on them before the sale, and the properties that sell, that sell at the sale, so, uh, we're, we're doing those efforts to collect taxes consistently.
So yeah, if, if we could get a copy of that outstanding report, that'd be great too, to just, a- additional, right? Because I know other than publication in the Globe, we have that list on our website too, right? We have the list of outstanding. Um, I'm just wondering for people that don't take the Globe, um, yeah, if we could get the list and be able to, you know, just glance at it and be able to reach out, or any efforts just to try to ke- keep, keep the dollars rolling in would be wonderful. Okay. Um, so we needed, we were notified by Northeast Kansas Environmental Service that our board member was, uh, Megan Doeman, who resigned from the Health Department. So they're asking us to appoint a new board member. Um, I reached out to our Executive Director of the Board, and she would recommend appointing her um, to get on there, to get everything kind of her feet wet and situated, since she's over the organization, so with that, I would make a motion to consider Deanna Lamb the Executive Director of the Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Department, to serve as um, our board appointee of Northeast Kansas Environmental Services.
Yeah.
So I would make that motion.
Certainly.
Okay, it's moved, seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes two to zero. Okay. Unfinished business. Um, our Finance Director had sent us now that our budget process is over, um, to keep pushing forward on some of the items, and just wanting to have a conversation of how we wanna handle those, if we wanna schedule workshops, or, uh, what that looks like, but, um, getting our language together for the EMS sales tax. Um, what that looks like, so, um, going ahead and getting that together, so we can get it to our legislators, so that when January rolls around, they're ready to rock and roll, and
Yeah.
Um, from our survey results, which I know we did cover those in our budget hearings, but from our survey results, there was, um, definitely support of putting that on the ballot, and, um, I don't think there's any negative, when you put something on the ballot, people can speak and and then that gives, um, everyone that knows the effects of EMS, um, and the numbers, that we can have time to educate the public and um, hope that's, um, another thing he suggested was Road and Bread, Road and Bridge Debt Tracking in a Strategic Plan. Um, so, we wanna talk about those workshops and get some penciled in, we can do that. Um, I had also thought and wondered if you would be willing, so I know the City of Atchison had reached out to us um, to, to sit down and discuss NRP, what that looks like moving forward, but there's so many great topics, I think, that are relevant right now, that if the county hosted, um, like bringing our cities in, um, to visit with us, and like, some of the things that we could talk, you know, the NRP could be one, because all of the cities are gonna have a neighborhood, right? I think it would be appropriate for us to give them an update on, you know, we reduced our solid waste and joint communications, but I don't think that's gonna be feasible you know, in years to come.
Yeah.
And so having the discussion of what that looks like from a user-based fee, because it's going to go back, you know, on our callers, um, and so that could be something that we talk about. Um, which I had a, I always think of these things at the most random time, that would be relevant for conversation with them.
Well, I think the sales tax.
That, yeah.
Would also be relevant.
Yep, sales tax.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, we could ke- come up with an agenda and invite them um, to visit with us. Probably an evening would be better, to just set aside an evening. Um.
Yeah, and, and, but I, I really think, and, and, I don't know that we discussed who's gonna who's gonna do this, but we, we, we've gotta decide what part of the NRP that we're going to adjust to get us to where we wanna be, and where we feel comfortable, so that has to, I feel like that has to be something we get on right away, that we have to, because I wouldn't feel comfortable going into a meeting about the NRP unless we knew at what level we were gonna get back in.
Yep.
And kind of maybe how we were gonna do that, how we're gonna accomplish that, so, um.
We heard back that that analysis from the third party will be roughly three months.
Okay, we don't wanna we don't wanna wait that long.
But maybe just reassuring them, like, getting at the table, just kind of what we just told, like, we're all in, we wanna participate and support growth and all the things, um, I don't know, I just, the countywide sales tax would be a good one. Um, and then giving people a heads up that, hey, in twenty-seven, we might all have to start contributing to solid waste of it on a user fee.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, no doubt that that has to be structured a little differently, cuz it's not uh, the, the three-quarters, that's not even enough, so, yeah. Uh, I guess, what we could do is between the data we have from our Appraiser's Office, the data that Mark can crunch, we can maybe get to some of those figures on the NRP. Cuz, yeah, we don't wanna wait.
Yeah.
Ninety days.
Okay, so, um, we'll just keep that on the radar, and when Eric's back, kind of maybe give some dates that work for everybody. Mark, you need any, like, additional?
Nope.
On that?
Nope.
We'll just kind of plug those in here and there of a workshop, and
Yep.
Being sales tax, sales tax verbiage being the priority at this moment.
Yep. Because the twenty, twenty-seven budget will be upon us in, you know, just a few months.
Yeah.
Okay, so, with that, is there any other unfinished business that we need to discuss? Oh, that was the other thing, I wanted to put on the county and the cities, uh, we have the new KDOT guy, um, Wes Moore, and so I was gonna have him come to introduce himself, cuz he wanted to meet all the cities. So that could be another item of, with all of us in the same room, he could come in and introduce himself.
Yeah.
Okay. One, I've heard you. We have nothing other than, next week is when we were going to, um, either recess or adjourn to meet, um, go to attend a meet and greet with, um, Jeff Collier, that was coming.
That's when we give.
Next week, next Tuesday, at noon. Um. That one, the Blue cheese too, I can't remember, I have to look back.
I think it is.
Oh, and then.
Next Tuesday.
Um. Jeff Collier, one of the gentlemen running for governor, is going to be here. I have the invites still that they sent us. September thirtieth, Blue Cheese Banquet Room, noon to one. The Commissioners will be attending. Um, and then the only other thing is, I'll add, next week is Corey just sent us his EMS report for, on, this will be August. Um, the other thing would be the lease agreement for the Health Department. I know we don't meet again until November third, but if we could have that, um, done or ready, that way I can take it to them. On, I brought it up at our September eighth meeting, um, and they understand, I think her goal was to get lease agreements with all of the counties, um.
So I think we just need to figure out what that looks like, does it, is, is it gonna be the same aspect, like, or a whole lease agreement, or?
Probably, they're doing utilities and then the insurance and.
Okay, so maybe I just, uh, get with Pat to have the same one kind of tweaked up a little bit?
Yeah.
And then what about putting on somewhere the direction we're gonna go with, with, you know, IT?
Oh yeah, he was coming back to us with his recommendation after he had. I wonder when he will need to do that. Can you check in with him, Mark?
Sure.
Cuz he was leaning toward the MSP here. But he was going to make some phone calls and check around on what he wanted to do.
Um, I'd say you probably need to hear from her next week or so.
Okay. Uh, and then another thing that I've left in my inbox because of the budget was the sports complex proposal that we received or from ARC, um, he wanted to kind of revisit that and keep that at the forefront. So I don't know what that looks like as far as.
Okay.
But just kind of keeping things.
Yeah.
I keep them in my inbox until we go through them, and I haven't. Okay. Well, that's all I have, if you don't have anything, Mr. Campbell, I would, um, call, there's no need for executive sessions today, no resolutions, so I would look for a motion to adjourn, um, we have two post-meeting workshops, one with Road and Bridge Superintendent to, um, discuss the road plan, and then at one o'clock we will have another election equipment demo, um, that will be here then, so. That, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So.
I'll second, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes two to zero.